Is rise, uh, seven fifteen for the pledge of allegiance. Bring back your board.
Hi.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, all which we stand for, one nation, one home. And this is all for the liberty and justice of our people.
Um, Dr. Willitt, if you could acknowledge our artwork in the back of the room?
Yeah, so we, uh, we have the honor of having some awesome artwork again. Uh, you know, it rotates every month and so this month we have artwork pottery photography. Um, actually, I'm going to do this here. And if it's not, the pottery might be actually downstairs. Um, but I'll read off the kids' names that have the artwork displayed throughout town hall and, uh, to, you know, to honor them and, um, and to thank them for, for giving us this honor of looking at it. So, uh, for pottery, we have Erica Miller, Anna Kelnowski, Marletta Zidofsky, Sophia Leach. For photography, we have Kayla Puren, Gianna Hurtaco, DJ George, Caden Grassi, Cassidy Winter. And for artwork that we see hanging around this, um, this room here is Savannah DiNoprio, Jocelyn Leary, Sarah Coolen, Maddie Sturt, Gabriella Trivato, and Cora Collins. So thank you very much to all the students who are making the town hall an even cooler place than it already was by, by having your, your awesome artwork here. Thank you.
Definitely go take a look. It's really pretty neat with all the pictures and seeing the sketches.
That's cool. That picture right there, right in the middle is one of my former middle leaders. And then Savannah DiNoprio is another one of my former players. So that, just seeing that is just so, so well done.
Yeah, hers was the top bird one.
The top bird.
Oh, definitely to shake that finger.
I looked at it at the beginning.
Okay, so, um, approval of agenda, we are not changing anything, but I will adjourn the motion for the approval minutes for the September twenty seventh.
Uh, Jake and I moved to approve the September twenty seventh meeting minutes.
Oh, second.
Um, any discussion with these? Does anyone, um, any question, any changes? Okay, seeing none, we will do the roll call vote, seeing that we have four members online. So, Jayden?
Aye.
Aye. And then Tony?
Aye.
Sophia? Sophia said aye, no, I was gonna say aye. Dana?
Aye.
Um, aye as well. It seems like there's like a lag or something with the, um, internet, just FYI. Okay, and I'm aye as well, therefore, these are approved as is and no changes. Now, public participation, we do have a two-minute timer that Dr. Willitt will put on the screen. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand if you're online, or you can come up and speak and the owl will pick you up. If you could list your name and your address for the record, so Lisa has that, um, can speak about anything. And it's not necessarily a back-and-forth dialogue. Um, board members can take the points of information to answer any questions that may be presented. So at this time, if you are online or in the room and you'd like to speak, um, please do so. I mean, for some reason, the hand's not working. It just seems like there's, when you're having things on here, it takes a little bit longer on the screen.
There's a lag. There is definitely a lag because when I'm trying to move the air around, it's jumping all over.
Yeah. So if you're online, please raise your hand, or if you'd like to come and speak, you can. Okay, seeing none, we will close that out. So let's move on to correspondence.
Right. We had a light correspondence report today. So we had an email begging the board for approving several policies in the parent contract at the last meeting. Yeah, there was also grateful that the board included parental notification and the recent transgender students policy. Uh, we had an email concerning school security at Birch Grove and an email asking to get on the distribution list for school notifications. And that was it.
Thank you. So, um, let's move to points of information at this time. And if Dr. Willitt or any members have anything to say, if you're online, please raise your hand. Please do so now. Okay. Seeing none, um, we will go ahead and we'll close that out too. Student representative.
Hello. So as you can probably tell, that's my hair, but it's replaced by hers. Pretty nice. Good to see what you're saying. Um, and as there is not here, that kind of lines up with this kind of bent flow a few weeks. But there are some pretty important things to talk about. As you can probably tell by my really professional choice of clothing, today we had PSATs. Um, there were a few little disruptions throughout the PSATs and technological difficulties, but overall, they all went well. Um, and nothing really went bad with them. On the topic of PSATs, AP testing, a hundred and five dollars are due by November tenth if you want to partake in an AP test. The Coffee House is this Friday at six PM in cafeteria. Admission is five dollars and a non-perishable food item for a local food bank. And finally, the TPO is looking for volunteers for their trail of treats, which will partake on Halloween night, October thirty first, five to seven PM or seven to eight PM at Crandall Park. And this is being directly marketed to high schoolers through our marketing. Any questions?
Homecoming coming up.
Homecoming is coming up. Uh, okay. That was gonna be next meeting, but, um.
I don't remember what day it was. I think somebody was shopping for homecoming dresses. I'm like, it must be time.
The next meeting, though. Homecoming. We can check them out before.
Is it the twenty, versus twenty-second?
It was the twenty. I'm on student council.
It's the twenty-first.
It's the twenty-first, yeah.
Versus the second.
Um, yeah. So it might be like that. So the twenty-first Saturday is homecoming. The theme is New York at night. The student council's been working very hard to prepare for this, um, homecoming. And it's gonna be a lot of fun. Any questions additionally?
Any other question? Uh, Dana has her hand up, so Dana?
I actually, questions with, I, I actually had my hand up from points of information, but with the internet, it was funky. So I can save it for the end if we need to. I don't want to mess up the rhythm of the, of the night.
Okay.
I'll say it really quickly. Uh, I don't know if anybody heard our conversation beforehand, but our student rep here is doing some great things. And I, I want to make sure our student rep is acknowledged as well, uh, with the deck and all that. But that'll be talked about in November and whatnot, I know. But, um, just from our conversation before, our student rep doing a lot of good things. And I'm excited for, for the next month or two.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Speaking of the next month or two, I have a lot of homework that I need to do, so I don't fail the next month or two. So thank you all for having me. I'll be back. I'm sure you know.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's move into the monthly financial report.
So, and as you know, in the first meeting of the month, we usually have some monthly financial report. Um, we will typically also will have, um, Aaron coming. Unfortunately, he's kind of, he's out. Uh, I don't have a weave right now for sickness, but he'll be back hopefully pretty soon. Um, the monthly financial report, uh, for this month is not too different from last. You know, we're still in the process of, um, you know, encumbering and going through the beginning of the year operational startup stuff. So you'll notice that, um, you know, things like salaries are under budget. Um, you don't expect that to last the whole season, the whole year, of course. Um, there's still staff to be hired from the parent side, although we do have, we've done very successful, been very successful with teacher hires. And now that the parent contract that, um, we passed last time is in force, I think we're gonna be more competitive for parents as well. So we're gonna be closing that and continuing to look for ways to best serve the kids. Um, substitutes, code one-ten, obviously gonna be under budget right now because we haven't incurred a lot of substitutes at this point in time. Siphons, um, as you know, typically they're over because we have not collected things like pay-to-play, things like that. Health, life, disability, um, that's over a little bit. Um, twenty-five, it's down twenty-two from last month. Um, it's just, uh, you know.
Excuse me, Will. Could you put it?
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course. Thank you. Thank you. It's gotta be before that. I'm trying to blow it up. Uh, but it is in your board packets, and if you do open that up at home, you can blow it up as, as big as you'd like. Uh, FICA, under budget sixty-eight. Most of the funds were, um, uh, encumbered in September vacancies and overtime. Don't get encumbered there, so it's not, it's not expected. ICMA, um, retirement is over by thirty-six. The account's gonna receive a credit of sixty thousand, uh, divided in the next two to three months from the forfeiture, uh, from a forfeiture and fiscal year twenty-four adopted budget. So it's gonna come back into a stabilized, you know, a positive position. Well, professional and technical services are under, you know, forty-four K. We haven't expended that yet. Um, there's most of it belongs to the IT department, so the things we had planned haven't yet been expended. Professional ed services, same thing, under by twenty thousand, roughly, um, nineteen, nine, you know, two ninety-four. And it'll also go down as we start to expand, as you'd expect. Tax services, uh, under budget seventy-four thousand. Balance will go down as we continue to expand. Three sixty is under ten thousand. Um, we did, as you recall, um, it's under budget right now, but as you recall, you had put ten thousand aside to offset some of the athletic fees for some of the people who, um, were participating in co-op sports. So, uh, Mr. McCloskey's been working very hard to get a good equal distribution of that, and I'll report out on that as we go along. But, um, that was a very positive thing the board did, and I think people will be appreciating it. They're in the co-op sports, so, um, that parent activity is under by ten, but that will go down as we start to do that. Cleaning and other services, code four-twenty, is under by forty thousand five ninety. And it'll keep getting spent. Repair, same thing, under budget, one, one forty-nine, three oh-one. Maintenance and custodial expenses are typically not gonna be all expended right now, as you know. Transportation is under by seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand two thirty. Um, but special ed has not encumbered the majority of the funds for transport yet, and the TSECD, um, has already been encumbered. So the thing is, uh, this is going to go down, as you might imagine, as soon as we start encumbering all of the transportation needs. So we'll probably see that go right down to almost zero, um, pretty fast as we encumber those things. Uh, at, the, um, advertising budget's slightly over, you know, we're putting a lot of ads in the papers. We do a lot of promotion to try to get staff. Tuition, five sixty, um, that's, right now, it's over by three eighty-nine, but you know that we do end up getting, um, you know, what we call excess cost grant in February and, uh, in May, so that'll balance out. You can expect line five sixty to stay over budget until we get to that point in the year. Let's see. The ERF credit has not also yet been applied, so, um, that should be happening, which also balanced that out. Remember, if you recall, we did apply some of the ERF to it. General supplies, code six hundred, uh, is over right now. Custodial supplies were encumbered and that caused it to go over a bit. So we probably, um, loosen that up a little by encumbering some of those. But the overall facilities budget is under. Uh, this piece is just over because, uh, you know, uh, they, they went ahead and encumbered a lot, kind of put it over a bit. So I do expect that to balance out. Uh, they're probably not gonna use everything that they've encumbered here, and Pete's always looking at that. Instructional supplies, six-ten, that's under budget by two hundred and seven-three eighty-six. Uh, we'll continue to be encumbering that, and as expected, that'll go down. Energy expenses were transferred to the town UISF fund account, um, as is the typical process. And so at the beginning of this fiscal year in July, uh, usually that gets transferred over first thing. Uh, chance, uh, textbook, code six forty, is under budget by ninety-four ninety-nine. Won't be under for long, though, because we'll be, um, starting to spend in that area. Misland supply, same thing, it's thirty-seven, five oh-eight to the positive, but we're gonna be continuing to spend that down. Um, and equipment, seven thirty, is under by sixty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-nine. Um, but the district, again, is just, this is really just the beginning of the year. So what you'd expect to happen here is those will start going pretty fast now. Um, we are looking at special ed again. It's already on the radar. So, you know, it's something we're gonna have to watch pretty hard. Um, we have some, Minkin Bento families, we've got some things that we're gonna need to work out. Probably have an upcoming hearing for the board fairly soon. So there's a lot coming in the next couple of weeks and months. But we have, you know, we'll, we're gonna have to watch that special ed line really closely. It's just, uh, something that we've been doing, as you know, for the last year, and that, that has not changed into this year. We just have to be very careful. So that's, that's kind of where we are right now, uh, where you'd expect us to be, but watching very carefully, you know, tuition, transportation, and things like that.
Okay, um, since we're, you just touched upon the USP account, just so that's on the record, I did reach out to Jones with, um, Dr. Willitt and Foley. I put Sophia and also John Reagan on there just to see if we would be able to have a joint meeting or talk about the USP account to review. I did get a response back that perhaps that we might, they might add it to their October twenty-fourth meeting, which is their regular meeting, so. Stay tuned. I did give them, provided them with the FFC minutes.
Yeah, they requested the FFC minutes, so I provided it just to fill it. We had discovered.
Yeah. So, just so that, since we're talking about accounts, I figured I'll just make sure the minutes reflect that.
My minutes reflect that.
Um, any questions about this? Any board members online? Anyone in the room? Nope. Okay, let's move on to the curriculum update.
Okay, so, um, oh, just in advance, you know, we'll propose here, there'll be three paragraphs, just to give you sort of updates, um, and then any questions that you have. So, um, I'm just gonna skip through it and then see if, uh, there's anything else you wanna know. Um, we are doing a lot of great work with dual enrollment, so we're looking to expand the AP offerings. There's no real, you know, shifts or actual rewrites, but AP does require you, that you follow the AP program. So everywhere we can, we're looking at how we can make something either at UConn AC or an AP class. So that's a big, you know, big initiative for the coming year. Um, so again, it's not a major curriculum rewrite, but it's called dual, you know, the dual enrollment piece, we rolled in our school, but also in, let's say, at UConn. Um, that will expand a lot of opportunities for kids, so we're, we're continuing at looking at which courses we can do that way. Science-specific, um, teachers are now fully implementing, uh, the K-12 curriculum. Mark Rudy's done a great job. Um, there's been a lot of work with respect to, uh, planning at the K-8 level to revise and update documents. There's been a lot of documents for outdated that they were using, and so Mark worked with the teams, teachers. Mark Rudy, who's the science supervisor, worked with the team of teachers to make sure that they were using the most updated science stocks and everything. We don't buy a science program here. We use, uh, we collect it and then follow, um, the standard curriculum. And, uh, so there's not a big expense for something like a prepackaged science curriculum. Um, but, you know, the, the team has done a great job of pulling documents. And, and he worked with crack on a model curriculum for the state at one point. So he was able to leverage, because we sent people to work at crack on that document, uh, we were able to have access to those documents, um, without a big expense. So, you know, we have an excellent, um, curriculum that's most highly updated, and it's great that he was able to leverage that at a very, you know, very low, um, investment level for us. Right now, they're working on updating their assessments and making common assessments so that across all classes, they'll be able to track data and see, you know, compare groups of kids, um, and progress monitor in the best way possible. Um, they're doing a lot of community outreach and connections. You're gonna see a lot of field trips this year. We've, uh, successfully, um, acquired some grants and the Talon Education Foundation is working great, um, helping us out a lot. You'll see, you know, in the future, we'll be making a few announcements, things that, uh, we're doing in conjunction with them. So there's a lot of great things coming with respect to field trips in general, with science field trips, things like that. The community connections activities, the curriculum nights are gonna have a lot of science, the teachers work on that. I've already started working on that. Um, we're gonna be connecting units to things that go on in Talon. So, um, they're choosing things around us, uh, you know, uh, they're using the back kind of woods area behind the, um, behind the school, and they're gonna be looking at a lot of horticultural things and a lot of water level things. And trying to get into science units anywhere they can so that kids have a connection in their community to the things they're learning in the curriculum. And so the Talon Conservation Curriculum, sorry, Talon Conservation Commission has been a great partner with us. Um, and we've, you know, got some good agreements with the town. So we're developing projects that allow fourth and sixth graders to actually go around and, you know, improve parks and trails, and they tie into the units, and it's just really awesome what it's been doing. The science IABs, they're, they're called interim assessment blocks, which makes no sense to anybody who's ever, you know, doesn't know anything about the education system, it's from the state. But IABs are like the foundation of the S-Back content. So if you're training kids in I, or NGSS, if you're training kids in the IAB stuff, they're getting better trained for the NGSS, which is the state's assessment for science. So we've been using IABs now, um, to help, uh, the K-8 students kind of prepare for the NGSS, and we're embedding them within units. The first group of IABs for the NGSS, we're not, we're not the greatest, so we've developed some homegrown ones that were better. Some of the other content areas were a little luckier because the IABs were excellent. The, the other, the ones for science were not, not quite as strong, so Mark's been working with teams of teachers to get them up to snuff. And so it's, it's been working great, and they're getting embedded in the units now so that we take them, the kids take them regularly, and then we can use a good progress monitor ahead of the NGSS, because that's only one time a year. Um, so the TMS has developed and is piloting three, uh, what's called a dimensional assessments to serve as data points for student progress. And so because you don't have IABs at that level, they created, um, these kind of, uh, snapshots in time that all kids take at high school that then they can, you know, link to whether or not, you know, they're prepared adequately for the other great science tests. So whether it's K-8 or high school, they've made a lot of great advancements in those areas. Um, ELOA. So kindergarten currently uses the CSDE-approved program, uh, what's called inter-reading. And it's the first year of implementation for this program. Uh, we did get the right-to-read grant, so we got seventy-six thousand dollars. Barb and I are wrapping that up probably by December when we do the final submission. They pushed the, uh, the date back to December, thankfully. Uh, and so we have about seventy-six thousand grant dollars to spend. We've already implemented the first year of the program, and we'll be able to backward fill, um, some of the budget with that money, um, and some of the programming. So we'll have other opportunities in the coming year to, you know, a little more flexibility. Um, we continue using foundations, Haggerty, um, grades one through four use journeys. Um, foundations and Haggerty are basically K-three. Um, but we, in working with the state, and I've had a couple of calls with the state, and Melissa Hickey and the state, who just happens to have the same name as our principal. Um, you know, uh, we've had really good interactions and, uh, you know, I think they have, they feel we're have, we have a really great program here. And so we've been told that Barb's doing a great job, Dr. David Burns is doing a great job. Um, so these programs have, um, you know, they're, right now, the state is trying to make a determination which programs it's gonna make its final state list. But things like inter-reading, um, we already, that is already something that the state, you know, has approved, so to speak. So we'll be able to apply that seventy-six thousand back against the programs that we have, you know, that we've invested in, and that will help us. Um, grades four and five, where you have structured literacy, structured word inquiry and morphology approach. Um, and then grades five through eight, where you primarily wit and wisdom, uh, to help build the reading curriculum. The high school is a novel-based approach, so they're not part of a specific program, but there are novels that tie into their classes, which makes it easier for interdisciplinary units to occur. So if you're doing something on, um, World War II or the Civil Rights Movement, you tie in relevant novels along the way. That's, that's generally how that level approaches it. Um, in math, you'll be getting the math presentation next, uh, next board meeting. But I'll give you just the basic over, you know, flyover. I don't want to take her thunder away, but, um, we basically have four main pillars right now, and, um, it's Bridges, Illustrated Math, Co-teaching, and the BTC of building thinking classrooms approach. So Bridges is basically pre-K to five, and, um, it has, you know, a program called Number Corner. Um, a lot of encouraging students discourse, a lot of coaching support, uh, fluency data that's on, um, the data dashboard right now. If you go look at, uh, if you go look at our data dashboard off of the superintendent's page, um, it's called the data portal. You'll see there's been a lot of progress in that. In fact, our facts in these grades went up by twenty points, sixteen and twenty points, which is a colossal jump. Usually you see one or two points or something, so we've had, uh, massive jumps in the younger grades, uh, showing a lot of success in that program. And you'll also see in the portal that it actually goes into some of the fluency data too. So it's not just the S-Back that's shared. Uh, we share the sub-tests that we use, progress monitoring tests we use along the way, so we share results for that. So if you take a look at it, I'll be posting new ones in the next two weeks, because we'll have our next dataset coming in two weeks. But, um, extremely, uh, great success story for, to that level. Illustrated math is grade six-eight. We also went up mostly in there, uh, there too, not as pronounced, it'd be twenty points. Um, I think one grade dropped down a little, but the others went up, uh, noticeably. And overall, up, uh, up by quite a bit, actually even higher for K than our pre-pandemic level was in some cases. So it's really great. Um, in any case, it's illustrated math. And so they've been using that in advanced courses there, and they've seen a lot of success. We're piloting on algebra, one A, one B, um, combination classes, twenty-one, twenty-two, um, that we've been working on it. Now twenty-three, twenty-four, you're gonna see the pilots come out. There are programs called DESMOS, and, um, those have shown to really benefit the kids from a data point of view. When we collect the progress monitoring data, or we use it, the better they seem to do. And, uh, the co-teaching and coaching part, we have actually brought in, um, and working with, uh, Eastcon in a cooperative arrangement to set up our classrooms so that we have, uh, you know, our general ed teachers working with, uh, special ed teachers to provide, uh, co-teaching in the classroom together, and that has closed our achievement gap. So what, one of the problems that we've had in the past was that on our results and our accountability parameters, we were getting dinged on the achievement gap, meaning the difference in achievement between general ed students and students of special ed on things like the S-Back or the C-TOSS, which is the special ed version. So, um, we're, we have, we are closing that gap, and that's helping us get higher accountability scores. So the S-Back score is one thing, and then you have the accountability matrix. I expect in the next year or two or three, we're gonna rise into the top five there because we're closing the achievement gap. We're gonna be addressing the PE, the strange PE, um, you know, assessment issue. Um, and our attendance is starting to trend better, you know, and we're gonna be putting more energy into the attendance program. So, uh, we'll probably be jumping up pretty, pretty much, uh, a couple, at least a couple of positions, if not up to the top five in that accountability group. Um, co-teaching is a big part of that. We've been able to really close that achievement gap. And, um, and, you know, that's gonna continue to occur. We continue to establish and, um, and put more energy into that program. We've expanded the number of co-teaching groups, uh, and there's a lot of data showing, um, how successful it is. So at some point, we could even do a presentation on that to the board, if you'd like it. Maybe make a instructional rounds around co-teaching. I think we could run close to that, but this would be directly on it.
I think, yeah, co-teaching for the reading.
Yeah, so you saw some part of it. We could do an entire thing on it. It's really, it's great. And it's, uh, and Jen Webster, about David Burns, a whole bunch of people, Patty Has, have worked on it. It's, uh, it's fantastic. Winnie Cody, uh, and a lot of teachers have worked into it, so. Uh, THS students, um, there are more kids taking higher-level courses now in the past, so there's more access to CPs, um, in advanced. And they're, they're going into them at higher numbers, which is really good. Um, beyond thinking classrooms, there's a K-12 book study, um, problem-solving methodology that helps kids with communication, collaboration, um, in math. And so, um, the K, you know, K-12 is being adopted, and we're working on that at the high school too. So the high school uses mostly the state stuff that we have, but, um, there's a lot of success at that level too with, uh, can be, you know, K-12 with kind of book study approach, the building thinking classrooms approach, and, um, building their collaboration as mathematicians is kind of a big focus, because you're trying to make them ready for the work world. So, um, and you'll see, uh, you know, that, um, that we're, we're seeing quite a bit of success there too, I think. Especially in the next couple of years, this is some of, some of the fruits of that lever. So overall, um, you know, really fantastic progress. Progress and we're making progress in all of these subject areas, but in particular math, kind of finishing on that hugely, I mean hugely some performance. A couple of weird tweaks there. We're looking into why, but overall, you know, very significant leaps even past our pre-pandemic. Pre-pandemic level. So, um, so that's, that's basically, you know, the big three social studies. You know, we don't have a supervisor for that. Nothing really has changed much in the social studies curriculum. Uh, we do have those new courses. We talked about the last, last couple of years here. Uh, that were developed to bring the, uh, K, K two level in particular up to the state's, uh, actual program because they were doing things. They were doing great things, but they weren't part of the new state curriculum. So social studies is actually now more closely aligned to the state's. Uh, social studies standards than it ever has been and that's good. Um, there's no social studies standardized test or anything like that, but, um. You know, I hope the kids do come back and talk about, um, you know, how much they enjoyed it, how much it helped them in college. I was talking to one the other day who kind of. Felt like it was a great program with the end of truth, but, you know, that, that's doing well too. And that's our big four. Our specials, uh, the biggest change there is really, there was a pottery change to allow more advanced students in pottery to have a section that, you know, would go into pottery and more deeply than. Then kids that were just exposed to it for the first time. So that, that came up, you know, a while back too. That's really only made, you know, big things say for the U A group that has shifted, um, and it's not very big shifts. So that's roughly it. Any questions? Um, there are state curricula that are being worked on right now, but that's not part of what's going on locally for us. There's a, you know, a couple of curricula that the state's looking at, um, and creating. I think January first is the deadline, twenty twenty four. Uh, for some of the, um, Asia Pacific, uh, Q I A and a few other curriculums, the state will be designing a model. Uh, what happens beyond that? I don't know, but that's kind of, that's all at the state level. That's not, uh, you know, that's not. Integrated with us. Um, things like the U S, uh, Black History course are in that way. And the state did then require their implementation. So in all districts implement that. Um, so the state sometimes does that, sometimes doesn't, uh, and so we don't know. We're not, we're not going to know that for a couple of months or even a year.
Okay, um, let's move to any more questions?
So as far as this requirements that you mentioned, Dr. Will, that aren't being worked on, but we're expecting to get them by January first. Um, do you have any idea if, uh, like say the Asia Pacific requirement, for example. Is that going to be a class we have to offer or is that more just, you need to incorporate some sort of Asian American history into the existing course offerings?
Uh, sure. I, I know for the U S D L A.
Yeah.
So I don't know. And, and, and I did ask a few questions about that and still not sure. I guess I wouldn't be surprised. Okay.
All right. Just curious, this is a big resource question, depending on what kind of requirement that ends up being actually.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. In the next couple of years, there's a lot like that. So if they did require them, say, oh, you probably wouldn't need to. I mean, I'm ready to start to cover the section. Otherwise we'd have to trade away sections for that. Could have created.
Okay. And the second question was, do you think they're going to hold to the January deadline or do you?
Okay. No, um, I did, uh, personal finance, that was another example. They went ahead and that's one hundred percent. We have that implemented by the twelfth five.
Yeah.
And that's already something we had, uh, established and we had offered a course, so that won't be a heavy lift. I'm just transitioning that. I mean, it might be a little bit, a second here and there, but, um, that's another example. And then the ones that they did say we must do.
Okay. That class, since you brought it up, um, apparently there's only one person teaching it, I believe. So there's, it's going to have to be at least another person. Is there going to have to be a, a higher for that position?
We'll have to see because, um, there may be a way to integrate it with math. You know, it could be that we have to pick up a section or two and have somebody do a section or two extra. There is a math course right now that also is a kind of, uh, financial responsibility class. So it might be able to tweak some of the sections. Um, and with some of the kids, because it's a requirement, some students may be able to take that. We'll have to see.
Okay.
And it's a, one of the students special education class right now, but that, but that, that population would still need to take a personal finance. And so it may be that we can, you know, get everybody through a personal finance course. We only have a couple of sections added.
Okay. And those are the sort of changes I think would be great to have in curriculum committee, you know, like some of the more major ones you don't. The social studies changes, for example, about a year ago. All right, that's all.
Um, so I'm just curious. So you mentioned, um, expanding perhaps in our A P offerings. Have you talked about yet or maybe something to talk about? Um, I'm noticing that at least some of the A P classes are spread over the whole year. And some of them are only semester based. And I'm wondering if the semester based ones. Put our students at a disadvantage when it comes to the A P exam. Like I know I was recently talking to a couple of now seniors and they didn't end up taking the A P chemistry exam. Because they didn't feel like all the material was covered in the one semester. So a lot of the kids. I think got their money back and didn't end up taking it. So I just wanted to see if that's something on your radar. To discuss, because I know like, I think it's A P English three is two semesters. I think A P Calc, you know, isn't that two semesters?
I believe it is.
A P Calc, but A P Physics, I know Physics one is one semester physics.
Well, like when I had it was UConn physics.
That's true.
So that was two semesters.
So now it's A P Physics, one is one semester and A P Physics, mechanic physics or calculus physics is another whole semester. But there are two completely different A P exams. So just something to think about because I do worry that. Like I said, we'll be putting our students at a disadvantage if they don't feel prepared for the exam in May. Because they only got one semester of, of, um, the A P class.
It's a good point. I'll look at it. I think the reason why it balances a little bit is we have eighty four minute periods. So they're actually from a minutes perspective, they call, they have the minutes to cover the content because they have these very big longer periods on. And we're semesterized like a college, whereas some schools are not. So that means the advantage to that, although, well, I think you have a good point that the disadvantage is you end the class at the semester and you're taking the A P test in weeks. But that, right? So there's a, you might lose some of it. Uh, but the advantages, and this has been an advantage for Talon, because you're semesterized, you can take more of them on your transcript. Because you're not limited to like these here long ones. You could take this and this, you know? So that means in the thirty two credits, your transcript might have more A Ps on it than are competitors. So you're right, there is that disadvantage of a couple of months and maybe, you know, a week or two a month. There's more like a month or two, but I take it.
Aren't these like four months?
Yeah.
It's like January.
Yeah, because they might have some failures, but to your point, there is a gap between some of the semester and them taking it. However, um, they get to take more. And so it does make them more competitive. Um, if they, you know, if it works with them. So I'll look at that, but that's the reason that it might have, that might give them a little advantage.
Anyone else? Yeah, well then, I'm going to ask a question I figure you were going to ask, um. The inter reading. I just feel like once again, we're constantly changing programs. Another program. So I just, once again, I just, I feel like we haven't stuck with a program and stayed with it for E L A. I mean, this could be great. And I, I mean, I don't know anything about inter reading, but I just always feel like. We sit down and when we review, it's like, here's the next best thing. Here's the next best thing. And I just don't feel like long term wise. We're sticking with a program. So I was surprised you didn't bring that up because.
Well, you know, they, we do have, um, like foundations we've had for a long time.
And foundations started, like I get that.
Um, but the reason that some of that. Happens is, for instance, the state of Connecticut. I have my own opinions about how they're doing this, trying to find a way to that.
Sorry.
So the state of Connecticut has chosen certain programs that it thinks are, well. That it thinks are the best. And, um, they have corporate partners. So these partners are the ones who are involved. And the state said, at one point, these shall be the programs you will use. And there was a bunch of pushback from districts. So the state said, okay, submit waivers. So in order to keep some of the programs that we have, we've submitted waivers. That waiver process is playing out with us in like a hundred and eleven other districts or something right now because there are many districts who are pretty peeved that. It seems like corporate partners were chosen or, you know, products or, or processes that people thought were very successful. So really the only one that's kind of newish in the group that I mentioned. Is journeys has been there, Haggerty's been there, foundations has been there. It's in, is the one you picked up, which is, uh, inter reading, right?
Well, it's the one that you had just mentioned.
Right, right.
And I was just like, oh.
That's, that's the one that state, that's the state's corporate partner. So, um, there is a chance we won't be given a choice whether we get to choose, you know, continue into reading or not. Um, but it does have some solid data with that group, especially with that, um, that younger group, that K group. So it made it, it made sense for us to do that, to make the investment for the K group because it's got solid data for that. Uh, and we have seventy six thousand dollars of state money that will apply to the one that is their corporate partner.
So they give us money to buy the program. Or nobody finds this to be a little.
That's why he did not want to answer my question.
That, uh, in any case, um, that's kind of why we have that. And, um, if the waiver goes down, we have that and we're already into it, you know, and if the waiver goes up, it was a, it was. Or is supported, it was a good program. And any, any district's waiver that is supported becomes part of the state's group that they have approved. So originally that was going to play out by October. That didn't happen. And then it was November and that didn't happen. So now it's playing out in December. Um, but we, we're pretty much, we're going to nail that grant. So we'll be okay from the point of view that at least we'll be able to work some of the costs that happens.
Well, that's why I just feel like every single time we turn around, there's a new program being implemented, which as we know is a cost base.
Yeah.
So then it's like, we get this, thankfully we have a grant for it for the seventy six thousand, but then, you know, then it gets implemented and hey, then it's, you know what I'm saying? It just kind of, well, it snowballs and we just don't.
The science of reading too has advanced. So writers workshop, writers workshop from Columbia University used to be the thing ten years ago. And then they discovered that kids that had phonics challenges and they didn't get that right, um, they were challenged with dyslexia, had a terrible. And so they, that, those programs fell out of favor because they were shown to be very, uh, ill equipped to handle the, what they had discovered. And so there's been a lot of advancement in what they, you know, know about dyslexia and some of the science of reading. And so that's what some of this is about, is adapting into that.
Yeah, no, and we didn't have that.
Lucy Parkin's, that whole thing, that, that went right out the window. It was ten years ago. That was the golden. The, you know, in golden program. So, um, they learn new things and then they apply their, their new, their new knowledge. You know, way people learn to read to, uh.
And, and I do think we do have some excellent, um, dyslexia programs. We saw them when we went to the educational rounds. So I know that we definitely have some really great programs. I just came across the names of them, but, um, I know that we saw it in action with the students, but. But like I said, my question was just, once again, here is another program and then another cost and then it just, you know. Okay. Anyone else with any other questions? No, no, Patty. Seeing none, we can move on to the homeschool.
All right. So, um, there's just, there's a lot, um, homeschooling has a lot of, um, layers. And so what I tried to do here is just give you a sense of, you know, um, the helicopter view. There are Connecticut state requirements for homeschooling. There's a lot of paperwork that we need to provide when it comes to homeschooling. So just as a quick reference, I put a lot of the, the legal info up there.
Let's just go say if you can, um, scroll. What was that? It's that, well, both only one.
It's not letting me.
No, because this is open to just one page at one.
I'm just going to go right to them. So I did, because it was really lagging. I broke it out. Okay, so. Um, I gave you all of the legal references that I could find to it, just so you had a comprehensive grouping of, um. New things that are in the state's legislation with respect to that. And then I am also Moonie's book, which is why the font is different. You can see that sometimes, um, people will ask, you know, homeschool student. Um, take part in sports activities, you know, things like that. Generally our district and most other districts, they know. Um, and the reason for that is when one comes, anyone from any of the outside programs would have to. And that requires a lot of logistics. You, you know, for instance, you need health forms, you need all the records, you need everything if somebody's going to start participating in things. So generally districts don't. So when you do homeschool, that's, that's a completely separate thing that's, you know, that goes on, um. And then I put in all the homeschooling docs that we usually use and they are different. So if you have a student that has a five oh four, there's paperwork that's sent home. Um, if you have a student that has an I A P, there's paperwork that's sent home. If you have, um, students that are general ed, it's a different set of paperwork, um, that goes home. You also have to send a notice, you know, a notice of intent that goes out. And so these docs were shared to, um, to you. So you get a sense of the paperwork that we have to send. And so, um, you know, we're supposed to be kind of checking in on the homeschool families to see, you know, if these are the, I mean, what they're doing. Did they select their, you know, are they giving them the full comprehensive education, um, you know? And then we do try to kind of engage in the dialogues and then some, that they will not send it back because sometimes. People that are homeschooling are homeschooling because they don't want to have a lot of bureaucratic overhead with respect to what they're doing or. You know, they may have a certain feeling about the curriculum or, um, you know, they may have personal feelings, you know, with respect to family religious beliefs, different things that people may, you know, may, um. You know, may have for, you know, wanting to do a homeschool program instead. But, um, you know, they, they will sometimes not fill these out and, um, you know, send a letter that they're now homeschooling the child. And so we accept that too. Generally, once a year, um, and I, and I will be doing this too, is just trying to reach out to those homeschool families. And we're supposed to sit down and have a discussion about curriculum, but, um, sometimes they, they don't want to do that. So, so this is really to get a chance, you know, it's a lot of content to read, but there are things that we are expected to do. And so we do do that, um, and the letters that we send sometimes do, they cover a lot of bases, but that's what we're supposed to send. So for instance, if a student has a five oh four, they get this communication, um, that makes sure that they're informed of their rights. Um, that they have the right to have their kids educated, you know, in a public school and that what, you know, section five oh four provides for, um, support for the child. Uh, you know, you just reiterate all the things that the, the law provides for students in a public school with respect to a five oh four designation. Um, and then, you know, you, you reach out to see, you know, if they change their mind, we reinitiate the Bible four, but we also let them know it's there. Same thing for special ed, um, students with a, um, I A P. Similarly, it's quite a bit of, um, you know, wording here, um, but it's denoted parents of their rights for a student that has an I A P and special education. Making sure they understand that, you know, it's in the public school, they have these rights, um, they're entitled to these services. If you pull a child out, homeschool them. Um, then you're not going to get these services. So, uh, this is important to provide to parent guardians to make sure that they are aware of their rights. And maybe they're a little frustrated by something, I don't know, you know, with a P P T or I A P or something and just making sure we reiterate the rights are given to them every time there's a P P T. Um, but if somebody leaves who has a student who has an I A P, this communication goes home to make sure we drive home that. And you have the right to ask for this, you have the right to have for that, you have the right to, you know, have a, you know, have a child binder to have a mediation, you know, that type of thing. So we just try to make sure people are aware, um, of all their rights when, um, when they leave to, to see if they wanted to, um. You know, if they want to take a different course of action because, um, obviously if it has an I A P, they have needs to want to make sure. And so all of this is boilerplate. Um, this, you'll notice these little docs have these numbers. That's a chip in a good one. And so all of this is boilerplate. This, you'll notice these little docs have these numbers. That's a different and good one, I think. So they're boilerplate communications that the state wants us to provide and our attorney has put into that format for us. So we usually will send them so. Typically, a communication letter, you know, if they, they wanna share why we, we embrace that. So that's roughly the shortest version of that that I can give you, but these are active links. So if you click on them, you'll go to the state of Connecticut sites. Site with respect to, you know, what's required. And so you know, you'll get a little bit more on it there too. There's a homeschooling site in the state of Connecticut that also explains a lot of this. And I've seen a lot of people that, that are homeschooling have, have looked at this, but if you haven't, this, this information is available out there as well. And, you know, they they have a couple of other resources too that I linked throughout the document. With respect to the number of people that homeschool, seventeen, eighteen, you know, there was five and then three and three, and then COVID, when COVID hit, there was forty. Then, then it dropped down to sixteen and then twelve and to ten to ten. And I expect we're probably getting back in the direction of going back down to five again or something. The electronics and the new schools that came about gave people many more options than I think originally. People were jumping to because of COVID and the flexibility. Some people just, you know, went, took an RV and went across the United States and took, you know, took a online schooling during that time. But I expect that number to drop back down to the, to the five and the three that we used to see before.
But it's ten right now.
It's ten right now, ten in the most recent year. It was down for last year and down from the year before. It's been going down every year since COVID was in its, hey, you know, spike or peak. So I expect that to keep going down back to the number of eight or seven or five. But that looks like that's where it's going, is back in that direction.
Okay, any board members with some questions?
I have a question. So if a family chooses to homeschool their kid or kids before they start kindergarten, do they have any obligation to tell us that? Because we wouldn't even know their child, so.
Right, no.
Okay.
I mean, no, we wouldn't know. And there'd be no really ramification for someone not covering it.
Yeah, okay. Which makes sense.
Yeah, you know, the, the thing is that kids, every student over than sixteen is supposed to get an education in the United States, right? So that might just be that there's, there's no teeth to it. But they probably would need to at some point, you know, register with someone that they had, you know, medical or whatever, that they have a kid at that age. But we've never, there's never, and there has never been a case where they've asked us to go around to a family that
This makes sense. And just also, I had, I know I had emailed about sort of about homeschooling, but I guess my question when I had emailed was more about do we ever do a survey or questionnaire to people who pulled their kids? It wasn't so much for homeschool, it was also for magnets, charters, Catholic schools, private schools. I was just more curious, not specific to homeschool. I recognize that a lot of people might choose not to answer a survey. But I was just wondering if we've ever thought about sending one just to get a general idea of, okay, why is somebody leaving town in public schools, say in fifth grade?
Yeah.
You know?
We, we do gather that info and part of, I think, curriculum covered some of it, right?
Yeah.
That has stayed stable over the last few years, but you know, but there's, you know, it's, it's generally the same group of stuff. Usually it's going to private schools, moving to a different state, but I can compile that too, because we did talk about it in curriculum.
Yeah. I think those numbers are a little bit more steady, like the COVID effect didn't affect them as much. It might have gone up a bit more, but
it was a tiny blip, but it stayed pretty consistent. It's usually the same general number or has been.
As far as the survey goes, I, I thought it was a good idea. I think, you know, even if the response rate is, is not a hundred percent, it's good to just give people that option. You know, a Google form or something would be good. You know, maybe we can find out some things that we can do better as a district. So I think it'd just be good to, an understanding.
Hold on, no, you're gonna leave because I got Tony over here. Got it? I have a line.
I got you.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Willett, you mentioned that, that I guess requirement for annually to reach out to the, the homeschooling parents or homeschooling families just to to make sure that everything's okay. Does the state require any feedback to them concerning what you've identified or? You know, any of it?
I think it actually goes in the direction of I'm supposed to kind of reach out and, you know, have connect with the school to see if curriculum that they're following is in alignment with the state curriculum. And I'm just thinking, as a matter of making sure that happens, you know, I'll, I'll reach out. But sometimes the, the individuals really don't wanna have a state curriculum.
Right. But we don't then turn back to the state and say there was no reply or?
Never reported that to the state, anything like that, you know, so no, no, you don't. And the states never come saying you need to send us this report of people that, you know, haven't done X, Y, or Z. Usually when first in homeschools, they pretty much break that connection until they wanna reinitiate it. And pretty few do reinitiate, but but you know, when they homeschool, there's a reason usually that first coming for them or resist or travel or something.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Dana?
Thank you, Ashley. So really quickly, the homeschooling requests, this is by student. So where it says the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, there's ten students. What, how many families does that cover? Dr. Willett, is that two families? Is that one? Is that three families in town?
And he said three kids. So, you know.
Sorry, I'm
You're right, it does fluctuate based on the number of, you know, three kids can make up. You know, that can be from one of the families. So, you know, that is part of it is, you know, it can fluctuate. If you have one extra family join and they have two kids, that number goes up by two obvious.
Gotcha. But right now, we don't know what that
Remember how many that, that
Yeah. I mean, because that could, in theory, that could be two or three families, basically, right? That's just kind of my question. I guess my other thing, and I don't know if I missed this through your presentation, I, my apologies. Can they enroll the kids, the, the students in school at any time during the school year or does it have to be a certain time or? Anything like that? So let's say they decided to homeschool, they can, they can reach out to the school system and decide to become a part of the town public school systems at any given time.
At any time, yeah. Okay, I mean, we would recommend, you know, earlier side of the year than at the latter side. Anytime. If they tried to do it the last week of school, we probably
Right. No, I just wanted to know like the flexibility, because I, I mean, I do, I, I was I was talking to a family years ago in COVID and they were talking about putting their children back in and I think that was the big point of the conversation was the flexibility of being able to to allow their, their children to come back to school. It was right in the middle of when we were still doing cohorts and all that kind of fun stuff. So I didn't know if any of that had kind of changed or if that was still status quo.
We wouldn't turn away any family who did that ever. And the thing is, when a child drops, you know, into a system, they would have to be assessed. Because we have to figure out where, you know, what their reading levels are.
Right.
Their academic levels are. So that may, you know, if anyone was thinking of coming back, I would recommend coming back on the you know, earlier part of the year where they can get those assessments done and place the kids in the best possible place for their, you know.
Right, have that entire school year of curriculum based on that. Got school grade. Okay, excellent. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Now, Gina, it's your turn.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's quick, just based off of your point of the survey. I think the documents that you would show us that you would run us through and do those sort of act as a survey as of right now?
Yeah, we do have quite a bit of information about, you know, why, and it's usually this pretty much the same things for the, for the bigger group.
Sure.
You know, but because the homeschool group, actually this group, not as much feedback comes from this group. Because they usually, that's it. But, yeah, we have, we have quite a bit of that. And I was going to do, like, we talked about it in curriculum, right, and saw what those were. And it's usually the same thing. They move. Or they go to, a lot of, a lot of people do typically go to private or Catholic school for high school.
But then even with the existence of like a Google form, there are still suggestions, but we still have to send these forms out or for these sort of separate.
No, we can do whatever we have.
Thinking logistically, that's more so where I'm going.
Yeah, I mean, we do, we do have quite a bit of information about the group, not homeschooling group here, but we can do whatever. It won't be, we kind of already do it. So there's, just they already ask, they already give us information usually. Though I can either talk about that or present that, or I can do it a different way. The homeschooling group again is, we don't have as much on them. They usually don't respond the same way. You know, off the opportunity to let us know. And their, their kind of, their disenrollment is a little different. Sometimes I think it's you know, it, it happens in a way that, you know, they have a very strong feeling about why they wanna do it and they may not wanna, you know, they don't wanna be, they don't want it to feel like the government, you know, the, the system is questioning or scrutinizing their decision. Whereas somebody who's moving to another town is moving to another town anyway. Yeah, I'm moving to East Catholic. Or yes, where they're gonna go to East Catholic or, you know, moving to Arizona. They don't really care. They'll just, you know, that's not that's not like feeling intrusive to them, though they, they'll just say it. But I think sometimes when there's homeschooling, people may feel like it's intrusive. You know, like, they're like, the, the fear is, as, as Mr. Holt had asked, is something reported to the state or is somebody gonna do something, you know, that, that, that doesn't feel right to them. And so I think that's, that's generally why we don't get as much feedback.
You know, while we're just talking, I was just thinking about all the other schools, because you have like the E O Smith, you have Cheney Tech, you have
From there is the Ag schools, Texas schools. Pretty much has that, yeah.
Crock has so many of the arts and stuff. You got the East Catholic, you have Oxford and Westerfield. Like, I mean, I was just kind of going through like the list of even kids that are
You learn the curriculum, drive for the board.
Going to, with tech and, you know, you know what I mean, Cheney, because they're gonna do work on automobiles and do, you know what I mean? So that's like, we don't offer that. You know what I'm saying? Like that's, a lot of these are like specialty programs that I, I mean, I wish did.
You know, the numbers are pretty consistent. It's a chunk that go to Cheney or, you know, a chunk that goes to Ag, a chunk that goes to which is moved to other states or that goes to, you know, surrounding Catholic schools or whatever. It's a you know, typically it looks like it's pretty stable each year that that happens and the numbers stayed about the same the last couple of years, so.
This is gonna be a random question and I don't know if you can answer it. How many of those students that do homeschooling, when they get into high school grades enough entering back into the school systems to go to a, any of these choices?
Well, in my experience, which is really just my experience, it seems like that's when they come back usually.
Just to high school, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, because then they, they, the SATs and things like that, that they're easier to access, things that are getting them on the college trajectory. So that's just my experience. Those, when they come back, seems like they're coming back at that. You know, so if that makes sense from a, a point of view, that's when a lot of college programming and things like that are being, gonna be.
Someone's not moving tonight or something. Okay, any other questions from board members?
I was just gonna add to the last one. I think as the pathways continue to grow as well, specifically in high school, getting feedback, you know, or insight as to what, for, in your example, Cheney offers that we don't. Maybe we've got a path similar to engineer, you know, getting that insight, I think, will help us just grow that even more. So that was just my, my one thing.
Well, your biggest, that is something that just, just to kind of end on, the state is putting a tremendous amount of money and resources into its magnet charters. Even more, more than one. So, you know, because the, the state failed to live up to its obligations under Shepherd's, you know, is, there's been more energy put into getting, you know, more kids to be attracted to magnets and charters. So doing things like the pathways, you know, you have an engineering program here or a business academy here. You know, if we can get the music arts and, you know, and dance kind of thing here, then people won't feel like they have to go there get it, which is the idea behind this. So, and now we do do a great job in eighth grade. We're doing the presentations. The engineering program presentation, the business program presentation for the eighth grader, and it did generate a lot of excitement. Because otherwise, all they're getting is, you know, they get to see pamphlets and the ads and the movie thing.
Don't do the movie then. Stop you there, stop you there. Very much a time.
They have, they have resources and things, you know, like that. But we can hold on to more of them if we get them as early as possible and say, hey, here's an awesome engineering program that connects us to UConn and and those programs have been great. We also talked about them, you too. Even the existence of the pathway is crucial to helping keep kids here. The state is investing a lot of money in this. And that is going to be the next ten years where I think they're gonna be wanting to focus because they're going to want to be more responsive and more successful in responding to that situation.
I will say during budget season, when I sat down with Mr. Paul and he had some ideas of how to create pathways. I wanna say it was like a music pathway or something in that nature that he thought would be able to do within budget realm and not do anything. So I mean, at least I feel like our admin are also thinking about these ideas of how we can develop within our budget constraints of projecting our school further, you know.
Yeah, that would be another, that would be one of the next logical jumps because we have a fairly robust music program. So we could pivot that a little bit, add dance and then have it be an academy or something so that certain ones that are very local to us would attract, you know, otherwise we'd feel like that's the place to go.
But we can, when we say that our music program is robust now, because we officially have a pet band. Officially a pet band that came to the high school game last year.
Okay, any other further questions? If not, we will go ahead and close this. Not seeing anyone's hand up, and I think everyone's good in the room. Okay, thank you for all this information. I think it was very helpful. Community liaison reports, if I'm correct, we don't have anything from the prior meeting. I believe last meeting kind of wrapped up the month with all those subcommittees. No report from me, no board action. So public participation, if you can get the ten minute timer. So at this point, if you're online, you can raise your hand. If you're in the room, the owl will pick you up. If you could, please list your name and address for the record. And you can speak about anything that we have on our agenda. And you can go anywhere because I will pick you up.
Um, so I wanted Oh, hold on one second.
There you go.
Okay, so I just wanted to discuss, to bring to the board. I am part of the homeschool community, although also my child is currently also at a public school. When I read through this, I, I was a little concerned because there seems to be a little bit of misunderstanding of some of the regulations. So I would ask you to consult the attorneys to get some things, like the, the notice of intent. That does not have to be done every year. Honestly, I'm not even a hundred percent sure it has to even be done initially, but legally, I think it would be good for common to send that to make sure that people know their rights. But I one hundred percent know it does not have to be done annually. Reasons why people leave, you're not gonna get that information even among the homeschool community. That is not a question we ask each other. It is very much the common reasons that people think. I will speak for my own. It is just that I have a very unique kid. And unfortunately, Tom doesn't offer what he will eventually need. He is in Birch Grove. He Has what he needs, but as he gets older, that is not something that is available in town. Um, currently we do a homeschool curriculum and then I put him on a bus and he goes for true. Um, so, and it's still not enough for him. So, um, that's just kind of what we do. Um, but that number of ten. I, I know like ten families in town, but you're not getting the people who never enrolled their child initially. So I think you, it's important to know that because. You can show up on Crandall's on a Wednesday and there's more than ten of us there. Um, with multiple children, but if they were never enrolled in a public preschool and a public school, then. You're not going to get that data, but also asking those questions, you're not going to get that information why they're doing it. That's a very personal thing to talk about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, if anyone.
We could do, no, I would.
If anyone online would like to go, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Okay, seeing none, um, if you would like to, um, and speak.
Money thirty-one, um.
There you go.
Money thirty-one, seven, um, I was wondering again about the homeschool situation. I was at, not just the homeschool, but also the children that are withdrawing from our schools. Um, because of the curriculum issues that you guys were all discussing this evening. That was, I guess, my question, if there was a possibility of finding out what the numbers are. I, I would really like to know what the decline is in our children in our public schools in Talon. Due to our academics. Based off of going to other programs with other schools that have better programs available that we're not offering. With the amount of money that we're spending on our school systems, the budget's increasing year after year. And yet academics are declining and children are leaving. So I'd really like to know what those numbers are.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone online? Last chance. Okay, seeing none, I will close out the public participation at this point. Um, it's. With some information for any board members. So you kind of got an answer to your question, that some students are just never been enrolled.
And then it is the, and that we were going to find out this year, right? There's plenty around.
Yeah.
So, I'll clarify that number two, that's ten requests per year, so it could be cumulative.
Right, it's for this year, right? So it's not like there weren't other, you know, in the past, if you pulled somebody out in third grade, you're not counted again.
Yeah.
Later and after that. Yeah, every year this would be, like in seventeen, eighteen, five decided to homeschool out of the system. You know, in, uh. But then you don't include. And then when it, when it's the COVID, it was forty came out and then, you know, and then the next year, you know.
So those are the new.
So every year we have. Yeah, you know, they come in, there's a, we don't, we're not reporting how many come into the system. This is just how many. They fill out the paperwork saying why I'm going to homeschool, you know, so ten, well, what we got this.
Okay.
Well, then twelve, yeah, and then back in eight, seventeen, eighteen, that was five. But again, that represents kids, not them.
So realistically, after COVID, somebody could have enrolled in homeschool. I guess withdraw, withdrew from homeschool, but then had. Again, this is just an example, have re-enrolled in homeschool. They would show up again, I assume in that, in that, you know.
They wouldn't show up here, like they wouldn't subtract from the number that, like, let's say somebody, the family that did, um, had two kids. Uh, went to homeschool in twenty-three, twenty-four and then came back in twenty-four, twenty-five. That number ten doesn't change to an eight.
Right.
It just means that certain kids came in, kids went out. Um, some of those years, you know, also. From an enrollment point of view, they're not, they're not deeply affecting enrollment. What is, is six point five percent of all, you know, all school. Uh, in this, in the state of Connecticut, there's an enrollment decline for all, you know, for six point five percent overall in the state. It's spread out, you know. Um, so there's, the whole state of Connecticut is, is experiencing an enrollment decline, um. And so it's pretty typical that, and we're in that zone. We've talked a couple of times about how we're, you know, we're gonna hit that like twenty-one hundred and then. We'll slowly climb up again because you have a larger kid, larger size is coming in. K five, and so the NASDAQ projections have been pretty consistent. You know, that one eighty number, that happened. And then the one, you know, one forty number, that happened. Expect the one sixty number, I fully expect that to happen. Because it's been pretty consistent. Usually, especially at the young end, they get that pretty right so far, so.
Um, let's go to Tony. He had his hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, you know, the two members of the public that got up and spoke, as well as the. You know, the ones that have, have sent emails and urged you to continue that conversation. I mean, I'm personally speaking, while we. While we often focus on, on what's happening in the physical schools of the districts, I think we all have a certain. Interest and compassionate. Towards the overall education and, and making sure that everybody that lives, uh, within our purview has that opportunity and. You know, I'm incredibly intrigued in ensuring that for the people that, that choose to homeschool for, for deeply personal reasons. To the point that was made just a little bit ago, that they understand what resources are available and. You know, how we can help and how we can eventually, if their goal is to bring them back or to continue on with, with that path that. We just recognize that from a community perspective, we're, we're in this together. So, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, Dr. Will, it just made me think of it because you brought up some of those one forty, one eighties. But I think it's important to note, because I'm not sure if people are realizing. That when the overall enrollment, I think, went down by like eighty-five, say, from last year to this year. We also have to look at the fact that I believe the class of twenty twenty-three graduated a hundred eighty-three and what was the kindergarten?
It was one ninety and then it was one forty.
Yeah, so we're not having eighty-seven kids withdraw.
Right.
You know, it's just, you know, you have to kind of do a little bit of math to say, okay, well, what is that probably?
Yeah, that's.
Just because the outgoing seniors compared to the incoming kindergarteners. There was a, um, big difference. So I just want to kind of put that on record that, that's something. And eventually, I think, when we kind of get through the next couple of high school classes. That will start evening out that the outgoing seniors and the incoming kindergarten are probably going to be a lot closer. Those, those bigger classes are starting to leave, um, town high school. So, anyway, I just wanted to put that out there because I think a lot of people. Thought eighty-five kids just.
I like that point that you made because I do think that it's always a topic of discussion that somehow we have like mass exodus from our school system. But we did have quite a bit of students, like you said, a large population for the high school that we had. And now it's kind of going down. We do have a couple of grades that do, are, are.
Yeah, and we talked a little bit about that last.
Yeah.
And that, that agenda item happened, but that's right.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, thank you for making that point in this because I think that is. It is important for people to realize that it's not, it's not like we're just losing students just left and right. Larger classes leaving, so, yeah.
Okay, Dana?
Um, no, I, again, I want to appreciate, uh, I appreciate the, the public participation and. And I know that it's everybody's personal decision as to homeschool or send their children to public school, Catholic school or what have you. So I definitely appreciate, um, the sharing and communicating and I think, uh, what Tony was saying was. It's our, it's our job to do our due diligence to make sure that everybody in town has the resources to make that respective decision, whatever's correct for their. For their personal reasons and their families. So thank you. Um, and again, I, I do, I, I found that the fact that you were saying that a lot of the, the students that do come back into public school. Are usually the, the older students, um, you know, middle school, high school, that kind of thing. Um. Again, I have a, a friend of mine that had her children home since COVID. Um, they all just now came back into school. They're in a completely different town, uh, but they are all, um, fifth grade and up. Um, just the, the, the mom felt that it was time for her to go back into the school system and educate. And, and different things. So I just think that the whole point that I'm trying to get to is everybody has to make their own decision for themselves, but us. Um, providing their resources so that people can make those decisions is great. I also think that having the flexibility of people being able to join the public school system. At their due time, if that's what they want to do, I, I think that's fantastic, um, that we're having these, these kind of conversations to make people aware. Um, and then I know that this is points of information, uh, part of the agenda, uh, Ashley, but I had internet problems earlier. In the evening, but I just wanted to, to thank the, uh, Dr. Will and the entire town public school system. Um, specifically, um, T I S, um, with what happened last week, and I know that the other schools followed suit. Um, it just shows, um, the due diligence and the training that we're doing with our educators and our administrators and all personnel. Um, as well as with our students, um, that they, people knew how to react flawlessly in a situation, um, such as that. Uh, it's not something that we ever hope for, I mean, it's something that we planned for, but we never hoped for. Um, but I, I just want to thank, uh, every single person involved, um, in the planning and execution of. You know, uh, Wednesday's events. Um, I know that takes a lot of hard work. Um, it's hard to talk about this without, uh, being emotional with it because you're talking about our littlest children in preschool and. Kindergarten all the way through. Uh, I believe most of our high schoolers were out of school at that time, but. Uh, I just want to just pass on my thank and my sincere gratitude for all the hard work that comes into a situation like that. We hope that's not something that we ever have to, uh, encounter again, but that's what I have.
Hi, at this time.
Very quickly, um, for the second question that was asked, I think we covered a lot of, um, what you had just explained, the, the class size, the difference and whatnot. In the last curriculum. So, um, well, again, I know I mentioned it last week or two weeks ago, but that's another good resource to go back and watch that meeting and. Um, get an understanding of some of the numbers there. I just wanted to mention that, um, in case it's helpful.
Then go back to this meeting or last meeting and go back to the, um, the committee, you know, reports and whatnot. You know, I've mentioned that.
Too much to your son of this thing.
You know, it's. It's hard, it's hard to tell because the owls are on all the tables.
Don't sit near, close to the head of the table because it's right there.
No kidding. Yeah, the more you know.
Okay, so you know what time it is? All in favor and say aye. Tony, Dana, Sophia, I didn't hear an aye from you. Sophia, come on, we're waiting on you. Oh, she's, she can't, she's not talking. Okay, so she says aye, I'm a aye, so we will adjourn at eight thirty-eight. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful night.